I'd like to call the meeting to order if you would stand for a motion of silence, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance.
My Pledge of Allegiance is to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, welcome everyone and welcome everyone who's watching from home. Madam Clerk, call the roll.
Trustee DeVore. Trustee Gett.
Present.
Trustee Kazam. Trustee Riker.
Present.
Trustee Wigginton.
Present.
Trustee Weisenberg.
Present.
All right, two absent, but we do have a quorum. Next is the approval of the minutes from the Board of Trustees, meeting March 4th, 2025. I'd ask for a motion to approve the minutes.
Make a motion.
Second?
It's been moved and seconded to approve the minutes. Any questions on the minutes or corrections to the minutes? Hearing now, and all those in favor of approving the minutes signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The ayes have it. Madam Clerk, do you have correspondence?
I do. This letter is to Chief of Police Dustin Sutton, and it reads as follows. Dear Chief Sutton, On Saturday night, March 8th, 2025, my wife Bonnie and I were in our living room watching TV when an extremely loud noise occurred at 8:15 PM that felt like someone was banging very hard on our door. When I went to the door to check, there was no one on our porch. However, it was a troubling experience. We decided to call the Heights Police and explain to them what had happened. Within five minutes, two officers were at our home. I had told them why we called, and one officer walked around our house to check and see if there was anything out of place. He then told me they would keep an eye on the house to make sure everything was okay. The actions of the two officers were very professional. It reassured my wife and I that everything was fine. I just wanted to commend the two officers who came to our house. They were excellent and performed in a very professional way in handling the situation. Sincerely, Chester and Bonnie Fuller.
Is that all?
That's all.
All right, thank you very much. We would be at comments from the audience on agenda items only. If anyone is here tonight to address the board on agenda items, please come forward to the podium, give your name and address, and try and keep your remarks under five minutes. Public comments are now open. No one once. Twice. All right, comments from the audience are closed. At this point, we do have a public hearing, so I would like to officially open the public hearing regarding manganese treatment and IEPa preliminary environmental impacts determination. So at this point, I turn it over to the Woodard and Kern folks.
My name's Don Toll. I'm with Woodard and Kern. This is a public hearing or public comment period for the proposed manganese filtration system down at the water treatment plant. And so following this meeting, if there's any public comment here, we can take that. And then following, there'll be a 10-day period for public comment. And just as a project overview, the project includes building a new water treatment plant building.
I'm sorry to interrupt you. Would you hold the mic to your mouth? I'm having a hard time hearing you.
Oh, sorry. I'm sorry. This project includes building a new water treatment plant building at the existing water treat plant site that can accommodate media filtration system to remove excess manganese from the village's drinking water. This project simultaneously reduces level of soluble iron, hydrogen sulfide, arsenic, and radium in the water source. Recently, two of the village's drinking water wells have contained high amounts of manganese that limit the use of those wells. This project will allow the village to once again draw drinking water from those pre-existing drinking water wells by treating the excess manganese, therefore increasing the village's water supply. This project is anticipated to cost around $8.5 million. The village has applied for a loan from the Illinois Environmental Protection Agency at a low interest rate of approximately 1.87. This could also include grant. We don't know what that grant would be until they officially give us the award. The village would be responsible for paying back this loan over a 20-year period. Again, it could be the full eight and a half, or it could be a reduced amount based on what grant they provide. And that's pretty much it. So this will allow the public to comment on that or ask questions, and then we will give an official response.
All right, so if anyone here tonight would like to make a comment, please come forward and give your name and address.
Could I ask a question?
Yes.
Besides the manganese, you said it was iron?
Yeah, the same system, the green filtration, just by its own nature. Well, also, it can also, if you have this in your system, and I'm not saying you do, but it can do soluble iron, hydrogen sulfide, arsenic, and radium.
You said radium?
Yes.
Okay. And this won't filter any PFAS or anything like that?
No. What we're going to do as part of this project, when we build the building, it'll have several vessels for green sand filtration, which does the manganese, and then we'll leave room for future PFAS filtration. It's a separate filtration system.
Okay.
But those regulations haven't come down yet. We'll just have it prepared, so when that time does come, or if it comes, we can add that filtration in the same building.
Okay. And this is the building that's behind BFL Park?
This is next to the existing water plant. It'll be, it'll be just right in that same parking lot, on the same site. So it'll come from the wells, through the filtration, and then to the existing water treatment plant.
Anyone like to come forward and comment? Any other comments or questions from board?
I, Mr. Mayor, I appreciate Woodard and Kern thought process in future-proofing the facility. I think that, you know, who knows what could be regulated in the future, so leaving certain areas and bays that can accommodate new regulations makes a lot of sense.
Appreciate that.
So. So absent the regulations, wouldn't it still be a good idea to put the PFAS filtration in? I know it's expensive.
It's very expensive.
Right.
Now, it'd be better just to be prepared for it when it does come, because we don't know when or if it's even going to come.
Do you know if we've ever done any testing and detected PFAS?
We've done federal, the federal EPA has sent us tests to do. Yeah, and we've done those.
Is it more expensive to do it at a later date, or do it when we build the facility?
Since we'll be prepped for it, it won't be, I mean, it'll just be another project. It may be a little bit more expensive, but it'd be a waste of money to do it and may never need it, because first you have to have PFAS.
Right.
And then you have to be regulated and remitted.
To do it, right.
So we'll be prepared for it if it comes, and then it'll be based on whatever levels that they require us to do it at.
Any other comments? Any other comments? Any other comments? I'd ask for a motion to close the public hearing.
Some of them.
Make a motion to close.
I have a motion and a second from Trustee Weisenberg to close the public hearing. Any discussion on the motion? All those in favor of adjourning the public hearing signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The public hearing is closed.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay, we would be at old business. Any old business come for the board? All right, let's get right into new business. The first is ordinance 2025-1754, an ordinance changing the zoning classification of real property located at 1003 and 1007 East Manita in the village of Peoria Heights in the absence of Trustee DeVore. Could I have someone make a motion to approve this, please?
I make a motion.
All right.
Second.
All right. Counsel, I'm going to turn it over to you, and also Rick Pitzel is here tonight from the zoning board.
Very good. And I believe the applicant is here that, if anybody has any questions. This was in front of the ZBA at last month's ZBA meeting. They recommended rezoning, and subject to a reversion, which would be if the owner transfers, if there's any sort of transfer from the current user of the property, then it would revert to the R2 current zoning. So just to be clear, property is currently zoned R2. It's a church building. The rezoning request is to be to, if there's any transfer of the property after, if this board approves the ordinance, rezoning the property, any future transfer would automatically revert back to the R2 designation.
Rick, anything you'd like to add?
So we had our hearing last month and reviewed this, and we had had originally put some other stipulations on it, such as event times and that sort of thing, because there was one, one comment from the public about parking in that area, but they are going to take an adjacent property that's at Underground House. I don't know if you know what I'm talking about, but it's the Underground House. They're going to take that out and put a parking lot in there, and they'll have enough parking then for, so a general gathering place needs one parking spot per 75 square feet of usable space, and so they've estimated what their usable space is in the event that they change it into like an event center type thing, and that they would meet the parking for that event center type space. They currently just want to run a flower type business out of it, and I'll let them comment on, if they want to comment on what they, if you have questions about what they, what kind of businesses they're going to run out of there. So we had put some other stipulations on it that we have since found out that you can't really do, right? So we can't put a time, we can't tell them they can't have events after midnight. We can't, we can't say that, you know, that they have to use it for a flower shop or an event space. They could use it for whatever business they wanted to use it for. But I think there's some other built-in, you know, ordinances in the Heights that'll protect you as far as, you know, you wouldn't have to give them a liquor license, so, you know, it's not going to turn into a bar. So I think, I think there's some other things that already exist that would keep it from becoming something that maybe the neighborhood wouldn't want. But we, after looking at it, thought it was reasonable. There's not a lot of, you know, use for a building like that. Somebody would have to probably take it and tear it completely down and build something else if it was going to be housing. So, excuse me, so with, with all that, we, we had voted to approve the zoning change, but make it, the stipulation that if they ever sold it, it would revert back then to R2. So then we could revisit anybody else that wanted to use that property.
Thank you. Before I give the petitioners the opportunity to make any comments to the board if they so choose, if any of you have questions of counsel or Mr. Pitzel at this time?
I do. So under the business zoning, would they be permitted, absent a liquor license, to have like live music or any music?
Yeah, I would assume so, and just like any other business could have live music with, but they'd have to meet whatever the ordinance is for live music and noise.
It's 11 o'clock at night.
So, yeah, that would be.
Is there any way we can restrict loud, live music in the middle of a neighborhood until 11 o'clock at night?
You'd have to change the ordinance, I believe, right, Counsel?
We would, and we've talked about that in the past.
This is right in the middle of a neighborhood, so I would hate to have live music at an event center until 11 o'clock at night, right in the middle of a residential neighborhood.
Why don't we hear from them to see what their plans are? Maybe that's not even an issue.
Any other questions from the board for Counselor?
I have one question of Counsel or of Chairman Pitzel. So the reversion back to R2, if the property or if the entity, so tell me a little bit about that.
Sure. We've got it set up so that any transfer, whether it's a transfer in ownership or a lease to another entity that's going to operate there, would result in a reversion.
Okay. A lease.
That's the way the language is intended. Any, any transfer, let me find the language. Actually, it doesn't specifically reference lease, but any cessation of the operation of a floral design shop or event center would, would trigger a reversion.
Got it.
This is the old Olivet Missionary Church, right there at Cornrow?
Yeah, behind your old house, behind your old house.
Right.
Any other questions? All right, if the petitioners would like to address the board, please come forward. If you'd give your name and address, please, for the record.
My name is Heidi Rankenberger.
I'm Isabel, her daughter.
And what else did you, you wanted my, my current address, or?
Yeah, just for the record, please.
Yeah, 1962 West Kruger Road in Washington.
Okay, so anything you'd like to tell the board about your plans for the property and the business?
Yeah, so what we want to hope, hope to do with it is turn it into like a floral design studio. Right now, it's set up as a church, obviously, and there's pews in place and everything. We probably would not do a whole lot of cosmetic fix to that area yet. We would just move our coolers in, which would allow us to start designing and sending flowers out immediately, and then we would like to meet with clients, potential wedding clients, that kind of thing, on site. In the future, we would, we had talked about having a small event space, whether we keep it as the church or we just make it into a regular, you know, I'm not, I don't know that we've fully discussed that. I love that it's a church, so I intend to keep the steeple and that part of it. But it needs some, it needs some cosmetic fix and some repair before it would be ready to host events. There's also a really large, open basement that could be put into a potential living space to either be rented out or for family use, once we can get that up to code and that kind of thing. So, that.
Yeah, well, thank you. Hang tight right there. I appreciate you being here tonight. Questions or discussion on the motion?
So.
Go ahead, Jeff.
So you're planning on tearing down, tearing out the basement house?
Yes, the, the little underground thing next to it? Yeah. Yep, we want to remove that.
So do you envision having events that'll have like live music?
I mean, to be honest, I had never thought about it, because I'm thinking more of inside events with weddings and things like that.
I have never thought of live music.
We love live music. I know the Heights kind of has a lot of live music options, but I don't, I want to be a good neighbor, so I don't want to cause anybody issues with that.
With the flowering, flower business, do you expect to get a lot of deliveries at this location? Semi-trucks or?
Oh, no, 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 no. Yeah, it's all pickup or like a van kind of drop-off. Yeah. Mm-hmm.
What's going to be the name of this?
Consider.
Consider?
Mm-hmm.
Any other questions?
Are you going to be open?
Yeah, so.
Seven days a week?
No, yeah, at the beginning, it's mostly going to be by appointment only, where we have, if we, like, if we have specific meetings with clients, brides, that kind of thing. I don't anticipate us having a large retail presence at all. That's not what we're going for. It's more just a place for us to meet with potential brides, a place for us to have our coolers and vases and equipment and that kind of thing. If we do mock-ups, you know, on pews to show the brides how this looks, that kind of thing. Yeah.
All right, I'm going to call the questions. So, Madam Clerk?
Trustee Gett.
Aye.
Trustee Riker.
Aye.
Trustee Wigginton.
Aye.
Trustee Weisenberg.
Aye.
All right, that passes. Thank you so much for being here, and good luck.
Thank you so much for your time.
Okay, next is approval of purchase of a radar feedback speed sign in the amount of $8,401. Trustee Wigginton, I'd ask for a motion to approve.
I'm moved to approve the radar speed signs.
Is there a second?
Second.
Go right ahead, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So what we're looking at is similar radar signs that'll be powered by solar light. They give us some feedback as to how fast the traveler is, is moving, and I'm sure it'll all be under the speed limit, but these will be placed on Prospect Road exiting our, our jurisdiction, I believe, right?
Entering our jurisdiction.
Entering.
Southbound traffic.
Southbound traffic, sorry. Entering jurisdiction, southbound traffic, so we get more bang for our buck. They slow down, makes a lot more sense, because they come into Peoria Heights. So I know that we had been pushing, some of the trustees have been pushing for these. We have a little money in the budget this year to get this accomplished, so wanted to get those out this budget year. Did I miss anything?
Yeah, there was on Glen, eastbound traffic.
Sorry.
Yeah.
Then on Glen on eastbound. So we have, we have two spots on Prospect and on Glen hitting the traffic as they enter our more populated areas.
Discussion?
So eastbound, sorry, I wasn't a Boy Scout, that'd be coming down Glen towards the firehouse.
Yes. Entering school zone.
Right, right, yeah.
Anyone else? Madam Clerk?
Trustee Gett.
Aye.
Trustee Riker.
Aye.
Trustee Wigginton.
Aye.
Trustee Weisenberg.
Aye.
All right, that passes. Next is approval of a purchase of a patch box cold mix heating unit in the amount of Trustee Riker, I'd ask for a motion to approve.
I make a motion to approve the purchase of a patch box.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, go ahead, Trustee Riker.
All right, I'm ready for this one this time, guys. This is for a unit that goes in the small dump truck that we have that keeps the product warm for potholes. Now, I would like Chris to be more thorough.
Yeah, that's a good description. It's a, it's a box we put in the back of our one-ton dump truck. In the wintertime, it's really cold. The product is hard to put into potholes. This, while you're driving around, keeps it warm so it can be put into potholes throughout town. When we're running our snowplows, we tend to pop, old potholes pop out. This will make it a lot more efficient to fill those potholes, because right now, if we have to go get a big, you know, like a ton of this stuff, and it's, we can't get it all out at once. So this allows it to stay in the box, and then when we need it, we put it on the truck, it warms it up, and we can, we can shovel it into the holes. And it's also usable all year long. It's just more beneficial in the wintertime, because of the heating part of it.
Was this the only place you got a quote from?
That's the, this is the only one that I know that makes.
Oh, this that has that.
You know, I'm not saying there's not necessarily another product in the United States that makes one of these, but this is the only one I know of.
Is there any sort of warranty with it?
I would imagine there's probably some kind of warranty. I do know that Limestone Township has one.
Oh, okay.
They've had it for like 10 years, and they, they think it's great. They love it. The guys initially were like, I don't know about this, but they, they use it all the time.
So Vice Chancellor Chandler, they, they've been using the same one for 10 years?
Yes.
So this'll last us a decade or so?
Yeah, it's lasted them a long time, yeah. And he didn't make it sound like it was ready to be replaced or anything, so.
Well, it doesn't have a whole lot of moving parts.
No, it's literally just a box, but it's slanted, so it comes out easier, has a plate that you can shovel off of. It's just, it's a pretty good setup.
Comes off the heat of the engine of the truck.
Yes, yep.
Okay, so it's just like a glorified Yeti, just holding.
Right, yeah, yeah, right, yeah. But maybe not quite as much as a Yeti.
That's where your preference lies.
All right, anyone else? Madam Clerk?
Trustee Gett.
Aye.
Trustee Riker.
Aye.
Trustee Wigginton.
Aye.
Trustee Weisenberg.
Aye.
That passes, thank you. Next is Resolution 2025, 2025-7, a resolution approving a construction agreement with Mid Illinois Construction Companies and four-party rehabilitation agreement for HUD Healthy Homes Program. In Trustee DeVore's absence, could I get someone to make a motion to approve, please?
I make a motion.
Okay. Right wing, take it over, please.
Thanks. So, yeah, this has been a long time coming, so this is a part of the HUD Healthy Homes Program. Again, METEC is the lead agency on that project that we partnered with for many homes in the Peoria area, including Peoria Heights. The other partner is Tri-County Regional Planning Commission, so looking for contractors, METEC did two solicitations, RFQs, for contractors, but because of our prevailing wage and responsible bidder ordinances, they didn't find a contractor that could perform our, our projects, so. Actually, Mayor, if you recall, we met Mid Illinois at a presentation the last two years. We gave a presentation to the finishing contractors group and met Mid Illinois there, and they've done some other work for the village as well, so.
They've done quite a bit, and actually, we're very happy with them.
Yes.
Good local company, but go ahead.
Yeah, so Chris Lewis is here with Mid Illinois, and thanks for, Chris, for coming this evening, but Mid Illinois, when we met them, said, yeah, we can, we can do that kind of work and would be happy to help, so we issued another RFQ to be legal with everything, and Mid Illinois responded, and so this is the result of that solicitation. METEC has been involved, you know, kind of as the administrating group, so this is actually approval of the contract with Mid Illinois, as well as a, another, I would call it a supplemental agreement that you haven't seen yet, which is a four-party agreement, which will be an agreement between the individual homeowners, the METEC, the village, and I think Tri-County Regional Planning. So each individual homeowner will actually sign that particular agreement, and Mid Illinois is a part of that agreement too, so. So that's kind of a summary. Again, a long time coming, very happy that Mid Illinois can perform this work. It's not a traditional project like contractor gives us a price and who's the low bidder. This was a solicitation for, you know, qualifications, so the process will be, METEC has already identified homes with the village and done assessments on, I believe, 10 homes. So we'll take that information, Mid Illinois will take that, do their visits, and prepare proposals for us to review, and then based on those proposals, we'll, you know, approve individual homes and do this four-party agreement with individual homeowners and METEC, and then work that process. So again, long time coming, happy to have Mid Illinois on board.
Go ahead.
I'd like to comment. I'd like to thank Director Aldridge for his work on this. This has been a moving target with a lot of layers, but he's been very efficient, but he's been working on this quite a while, and I'm glad to see it finally coming to an end. So again, thanks, Wayne, for all your work.
I would echo that, and I think Mike helped write some of the, the grant as well. Both of you, we worked very hard on this for a lot of reasons, and we pursued this basically because we know there are a lot of homes in Peoria Heights that have elderly or handicapped residents, owners, that the homes need a lot of work, and we pursued this aggressively. We're successful, thanks again to Director Aldridge, and it did take some time going through all this, but I'm really happy that we have Mid Illinois doing the work. And the reason we want to be very careful in selecting a reputable contractor is because the villages is administering this grant, and we want to make sure that the work that's performed on all these houses is done by skilled tradespeople and done by reputable contractors. So it did take some time, because contractors don't normally make a lot of money working on real small jobs at, at a time, so. Anything you want to say about Mid Illinois Companies?
No, I mean, it's just.
Come forward and tell us about your company real quickly, please. Thank you.
So we're on our 55th year. Mid Illinois started in 1970 by Dan Higdon, who lived down the hill here. It actually started as Mid Illinois Painting and Drywall. And then in the mid to late 90s, Dennis Higdon and Deb Young, which are Dan's son and daughter, took over and changed it to Mid Illinois Companies. Still kind of wondering what companies are, but I get asked that a lot. So anyway, we do a lot of commercial work. We've done, one of, one of the good things about us is we employ all union labor, and we have carpenters, taper painters, plasters, and labor, so we kind of have an edge on other contractors who aren't signatory with the painters or plasterers, for lack of a better term, so then they're calling somebody like us to give them a price and putting a markup on it. So we're saving some money for the village that way. So we're saving some money for the village that way, um, and then, so, we have experience, we just finished seventy-five houses, uh, complex down in Springfield called Poplar Place, and it was basically the same type of system, or living facilities is what we're going to deal with. So we're used to dealing and going into certain environments and making it look good.
Thank you, questions?
Yeah, so on the exhibit B, are these just general items, or are these items that have been identified in the Heights?
These are, those are general items that would be looked for and included in, uh, what we call the initial assessment, so those are things that are, um.
So we haven't identified any houses yet?
Yes, we have.
Oh, we have?
We've identified, I believe, ten houses so far, and, and the initial assessment's been done by another contractor in METECH, so.
Okay.
And that's, that's kind of their role, if you recall, about a year, probably more than a year ago, we approved a, a separate contract with METECH, um, you know, just defined the roles in that, in that agreement.
And these households are owner occupied and income limited?
Yeah, that was a requirement.
And income based, to be honest?
It's based on needs, but yeah, yeah, yes.
Director Aldridge, first off, thank you for your efforts on this. I know this has been somewhat time-consuming, uh, to say the least. That being said, speaking of time-consuming, so are we anticipating ten different four-party agreements that will need to come before this board?
Yes, well, I don't, I don't think, I think the way it's set up, it doesn't have to come before the board again.
Okay.
Yeah, so it'll be at a, you know, a brief pre-construction meeting we'll have, we'll go over the scope of work with the homeowners, it's really for the homeowners.
Okay.
So they understand who the party's involved, and meet the contractors, and they'll have already met the contractor, but I, I think that particular contract form is, is required by HUD, yeah. And METECH has had some leadership changes, and I think we're in very good standing with METECH and happy with things happening there too, so they'll keep good accounting of the project and, uh, reimburse us, I think that's how we, this is set up, so we, as the contract holder, make the initial payments and then are reimbursed through METECH.
Okay, but the selection of the homes, we base again on, on need and administratively.
Yes.
The board approves the grant and the, the funding and the contractor, correct, counsel?
Correct.
Anyone else?
I just got to say I'm happy with, Mid Illinois has done a lot of work for the village over the years. Didn't you do, you did the, uh, firehouse down below, didn't you?
We did not do the firehouse, but I helped, uh, no, that's quite all right.
There was something I had worked.
They did some work on Tyler Park. Yeah, but I did me down there and pointed people in the right direction and got pricing together at one time, a few years ago. Um, few things we've done here, we've done some work in the Village Hall, um, we painted the woodpecker and rebuilt the head on it.
Yeah.
So, uh, the sculpts are out front, we touched that up after it was welded because of the cracks in it and that kind of thing, so numerous projects we've done for you guys.
Well, again, thanks to everyone, and if you recall, neighborhoods are a top priority of the Village Board. This has taken a lot longer and a lot more effort to get going than we thought, so this is a, a good first step. Madam Clerk?
Trustee Gatt?
Aye.
Trustee Riker?
Aye.
Trustee Wigginton?
Aye.
Trustee Weisenberg?
Aye.
All right, any, uh, any of you like to report on any of your committees, while we have a minute here on our new business, anything?
I do, I have just a quick update on, uh, an event at Popular Park this last weekend. Um, this last weekend, uh, Dr. Ethan Lynn led a group of volunteers to prep Popular Park for a pollinator garden, and we had the Peoria River Keepers there as well, helping with a cleanup of Popular Park. We probably removed twenty tires.
Twenty-three.
Twenty-three tires, um, from the woods, um, there at Popular Park, and a, a bunch of other garbage as well, and we made a lot of progress with the help of trustee Wigginton, um, of pollinator garden. You know, they typically don't put the IT guy in charge of the heavy equipment, but we did manage to get it working.
I think we had a doctor, a lawyer, and a, and an IT guy and an engineer.
Uh, it took some elbow grease, uh, a few of us were sore Sunday, um, but we got the, the garden area prepped for the pollinator garden that'll come later this year, um, and we removed, as I said previously, a lot of garbage, so I was quite proud of the team we assembled Saturday, um, to clean up the park and start that project. So thanks to everyone, including yourself, Mayor, who came out to help.
I, I didn't do much, I was, I was watching, but I, I, we had a lot of volunteers, and thank you for organizing that. I, I saw some people that I've never seen ever before volunteer at a village event, so that was nice, and Chris, I haven't told you, but based on what I saw, I'm moving, uh, trustee Weisenberg and Mike Bailey to Public Works next week.
And trustee Wigginton.
All right, anything else on that? That's really exciting, so what, now tell us when the planning will occur?
So, the planning, uh, the planting of the pollinator garden, I think it's two-hundred-and-fifty species of native, uh, wildflowers, and it's going to happen May twenty-fourth, I think that's the day, but I'll keep, um, everyone updated, and Mike, if we could do another, um, media blitz before that event, um, because it's, it's huge for the, the monarch butterflies and the other pollinators, um, so I will keep everyone updated on that.
Well, and that's a special place for both you and I, I know that, and as I mentioned earlier, under the METECH grant, Poplar Park and parks have been a high priority of the Village Board. We've been a little bit behind in getting things out of Poplar Park, but we do have, uh, benches and some other amenities that Administrator Sutton has ordered, so we're moving forward on, on that as well, and thank you for, again, for this project.
Thank you.
Okay, let's move, any other committee chairman?
Uh, just one thing, I think on public, uh, public safety, um, we had a successful St. Patrick's Day, uh, yesterday, our new, uh, cement barriers were used, um, I think everyone had a great time out there, and I'm not aware of any issues.
We had zero incidents, we had a few parking, minor parking issues that were addressed, but zero incidents. A lot of compliments, uh, from business owners and the citizens about the new barricades, it worked out very well, so, yeah.
Thanks. And, um, I think that's, Captain, unless you have anything?
And I do want to thank Public Works for their efficiency on setup and tear down, great job, Chris.
Thanks, it was our first go with it, and it's only going to get better.
Okay, Captain Thompson, if you have anything?
Uh, sure, yeah, we had a house fire yesterday, uh, right about four o'clock, first engine was there within five minutes, uh, the neighbor had it knocked down before we got there, we just had to do some overhaul, uh, tearing apart some soffit, fascia, um, siding, um, the homeowner, uh, the neighbor actually caught it and, uh, made a very good, you know, stop on it. And then, uh, last night, at about eleven o'clock, we had another fire in a kitchen down at Forest Park Apartments, um, which was pretty much snuffed out by a, uh, little dry chem, uh, canister that they have installed above their ranges. So, uh, yeah, yesterday had potential to be a pretty busy day for us, but luckily, uh, things didn't work out that way, so.
Good turnout, and good response time, correct?
Yeah, absolutely, we had nine members for that first fire, I think we had seven for that second one in the middle of the night, so, yeah, no, very, very good responses from all around.
Thank you very much. All right, trustee Wigginton, anything else, or?
Uh, nothing further.
Anyone else? Let's get right into miscellaneous, any miscellaneous?
I have one, sorry, Chief. Um, I have one, and I had previously spoken with, uh, Chief Sutton about this, but I just wanted to let the Village Board know, um, the Peoria Heights Grade School PTO recently reached out about, uh, wondering if we would donate to their Easter egg hunt again this year. Um, they're looking to have about four thousand eggs, uh, the event is on April twelfth, starting at three PM. I know in the past, this has been a huge community event for the school district, and as we all know, prices of everything is up. Um, so I know in years past, we've donated, so I was wondering if the Village Board would be, uh, willing to donate again to the PTO for this community?
We talked about five hundred, is that what you have in mind?
Yes.
Uh, that's within the administrator's spending limits, if there's no objection, that's what we'll do.
Yeah, should be, what, one or two dozen eggs?
Better go with candy eggs.
Mayor, just so you know, I volunteered you to be the Easter bunny this year.
Oh, okay.
Put the costume on and.
Okay.
Well, you agreed to do it, all right.
Thank you. Any, anyone else on miscellaneous, before we get to the budget? Because we're going to let you go last, and we're going to move on.
Well, I'm going to go with the budget.
Anyone, anyone else on miscellaneous? Go ahead, Nelson.
Just a quick update, you have a copy of the updated budget in your packet, so if you have any questions, additions or subtractions, please let me know in the next couple of weeks, if you would, please. I've already talked to a couple of you about some additions, um, I'm working on those now, but if anything new, just review and reach out in a couple of weeks, if you would, please. Thank you.
Thank you, Chief.
All right, we would be at general comments from the audience, if anyone would like to make any sort of general comment, please come forward to the podium, give your name and address, and keep your marks under five minutes. Welcome.
Hi, I'm Gloria Painter, eleven oh seven Easter egg.
Adam Painter, same address.
Um, we want to thank you, uh, we're actually part of the PTO, so your egg donation is very, very appreciated, um, we are going to have four thousand eggs there for kids from, in strollers, all the way up to like fifth, sixth, seventh graders if they decide to come, and it's open to anybody in the community, so thank you very, very much for the donation.
Thank you for volunteering, it's hard to get people to volunteer, and I know this is a lot of time you're putting forward, so thank you.
Um, real quick, they also do, uh, eggs for, um.
Our friends with wheels and steady heels.
Thank you, thank you.
So we actually tie, yeah, we tie, um, ribbon and balloons to eggs, so people who use wheelchairs and stuff, it's more accessible for them to be able to get eggs.
Very good.
I just wanted to point, make sure she pointed that out.
If you have a minute to stay after the meeting, Mike Bailey's sitting right there, might have a couple of questions for you, he does all of our social media, so.
Perfect, all right, thank you.
Okay, uh, that's April twelfth, and what, what's the time?
Uh, three and three twenty.
They usually go really, really fast.
Yeah, if you're late, if you're late, Jeff.
No eggs.
Yeah.
And they, they do a nice job of dividing up the, when it's inside in the gym, if it happens to rain, they divide it up for age, so that way the big kids aren't pummeling over the little kids.
I'll just pass it on to my granddaughter.
Yeah, they have a nice baby section, too, you know, little toddlers can toddle around and pick up a couple of eggs. They do a wonderful job on it.
All right, thank you. Any other miscellaneous? I'm sorry, we're at general comments, any other general comments? Comments from the audience going once, twice, comments from the audience are closed, we would be at payment of the bills, I'd ask for a motion to pay the bills.
Second, or I make a motion? Sorry, I was waiting on Jeff.
Second.
All right, I have a motion and a second to pay the bills, any question on any of the bills or discussion on the motion?
I just thought you ought to get used to it there, trustee Riker.
Huh?
I just thought you'd have to get used to it here in a few months.
Oh, yeah, yeah, somebody's going to have to do it.
All right, Madam Clerk, call the roll.
Trustee Gatt?
Aye.
Trustee Riker?
Aye.
Trustee Wigginton?
Aye.
Trustee Weisenberg?
Aye.
All right, the motion passes, the bills are paid, Madam Clerk, the Treasurers report.
As of the end of February, there was ten million three hundred and ninety-five thousand eight hundred and forty-six dollars and ninety-two cents in the village-controlled accounts, and the water-controlled accounts, there was two million four hundred and eighty-eight thousand three hundred and twenty-two dollars and six cents.
You've heard the Treasurers report, I'd ask for a motion to approve.
So moved.
Second.
It moved and seconded to approve the report, any discussion on the report or discussion on the motion? Hearing none, Madam Clerk?
Trustee Gatt?
Aye.
Trustee Riker?
Aye.
Trustee Wigginton?
Aye.
Trustee Weisenberg?